Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I appreciate you being patient with us while we went into a closed session. I believe we have a motion on the table. Is that correct?
Madam President, I'd like just one note to apologize to the parents I know this, and to you as well, because you were caught by surprise. And we were not supposed to do this as courtesy to all of you. But I think this meeting, this closed session, which is by law, we have to meet in closed session to discuss personnel or superintendent. And I appreciate every, I know folks are frustrated. You have to go home. You have the little ones. My little ones are still with their auntie. So I apologize to all of you, to the lady, but you cannot come and knock on the door like that where this body, this elected body is in closed session. So, thank you, and I apologize once again.
Can we have a recap of where we're at, please?
I believe I began to read the recommended action.
Okay.
So move forward with recommended action.
Yes.
All right, so move that action items numbered one through twenty, one to thirty, be approved as recommended in this agenda if necessary with the, no, no, hold on, no, wait, let's back up a little bit. We read special, let's see, are there any agenda items? I read that part, "on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately." If there are, we will exclude those from the motion below, and that's when...
I'd like to pull number thirty.
Okay, table it or pull it?
Just pull it right now, at this point, one motion at a time.
All right, so move that action items one to twenty-nine be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of thirty, correct?
One through twenty-nine, yes.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Thorpe, a second by Trustee Di Ambrogio. May I have a roll call, please?
Well, you have to ask if there's any questions.
Oh, are there any questions? Yes.
Do you have any questions? I do have a question, but I lost the...
The number?
Yeah, but I can, I can ask that since we're gonna vote on it. I'll ask about that later.
Okay.
I just had a question, but I'll ask that.
It wasn't one that was going to change your vote?
No, no, number thirty, no, 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 it was not gonna change my vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, may I have a roll call?
Roll call, Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes. President McDonald?
Yes. And may we have a summary?
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Southwest Food Service Excellence, SFE, per Board Report twenty-one hyphen one-eleven. Number three, approval of an award to EduStaff LLC per Board Report twenty-one hyphen one-one-two. Number four, approval of an award to Quaver Ed. Number five, approval and award to Great Minds PBC. Number six, approval of an award to Benchmark Education Company. Number seven to eight, approval of an award to Amplify Education. Number nine, approval of an award to Nasco Education. Number ten to twelve, approval of change orders. Number thirteen, approval of an award to Savas Learning Company. Number fourteen, approval of an award to Aynacop TSG. Number fifteen, approval of an award to Nagel Painting Company, Fastex, O'Donnell Electric, Absolute Fire Protection, Wally Kozorskis &amp; Company, Connolly Masonry and GV Painting per Board Report twenty-one hyphen one-one-three. Number sixteen, approval of an award to Superior Ground Cover. Number seventeen, approval of an award to More Prepared LLC. Number eighteen, approval of an award Midwest Carpet Cleaning. Number nineteen, approval of change orders. Number twenty, approval of awards to Connolly Masonry, Cun Specialty Flooring, O'Donnell Electric, and Spartan Group Construction per Board Report twenty-one hyphen one-one-four. Number twenty-one to twenty-four, approval of non-instruction and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number twenty-five, approval of financial statement. Number twenty-six, approval of resolution to adopt the 2022-2023 Wayne Reset General Fund operating budget per Report twenty-one hyphen one-twenty. Number twenty-seven, approval of the Wayne County Commissioners Youth Council's resolution per Board Report twenty-one hyphen one-twenty-one. Number twenty-eight, approval of the 2022-2023 membership for Dearborn and Edsel Ford in the Michigan High School Field Hockey League per Board Report twenty-one hyphen one-two-two. And number twenty-nine, approval of donations.
Trustee Berry?
Madam President, I offer a motion to table action item number thirty, also known as something at the table today, please. Is there support for my motion?
So moved.
Yes, there's a motion by Trustee Berry, supported by Trustee Petrikov, to table supplement item thirty.
Trustee, discussion now?
No, there's no discussion.
Just a tabling, yeah, you're right.
Roll call, please.
Yes, may I have a roll call?
Call the question, please.
Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Moses?
Yes.
Trustee Petrikov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes. President McDonald?
Yes. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by seven, well, six-ten, by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please, please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. The first person who would like to speak, she is going to give her three minutes to a friend. Rhonda Hassan is giving her three minutes to Mrs. Fowillad?
No, Stephanie Haviland.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
From...
She would like to discuss to the board about my journey as an educator with DPS.
Thank you. And thank you, Rhonda, for standing with me and giving me your three minutes. This is timed with fifteen seconds remaining, but please don't cut me off if I go fifteen seconds over, as my journey was really important to me. My name is Stephanie Haviland, and I am here tonight speaking for the first time in my fifteen-point-seven years of service with Dearborn. As of March fourth, 2022, I started my new path in life, a medical retirement. I have forever dreamt of being a stay-at-home mom, and I now have the opportunity to take care of myself and my family full-time. I am standing at the podium today with just a few objectives. To give all students one last lesson, keep using your voice. I thank you and your families for teaching me through all my years of service. Your constant positive reinforcement of what a great teacher I was taught me a lot. To say thank you to all that help the new teachers feel welcomed into the buildings, and for those of you that put your fears aside, to stand for all educators by using your voice to do what's right, no matter what your fear of the consequences. I also hope that you, as a board and administration, listen to my journey and hear where there could be some needed changes to putting educators first, so that they can in turn have the ability to put students first. I would never change my path, but I hope to help change the path of our future educators, as well as our future students. The oh-six-oh-seven school year was my first year teaching life skills at Bryant Middle School, and I reassured myself on my number-one interview question-answer. What I did not know, I would learn. What I didn't know, I certainly learned that year. Thank you to my mama, standing at my front porch by evening, ready to give me my sewing lessons. FCS certification does not entail any sewing class in college. I was learning as quickly as I was teaching. The seven-eight school year, I was ready to teach, called back from layoff to teach life skills at Stout and Salina Intermediate. My years split, teaching one semester at each building. Grateful, I still get to teach the same content. I start the year positive and eager to, to follow my interview answer. What I don't know, I will learn. The oh-eight-oh-nine school year was the same pattern, but I added reading intervention to my resume that year. Three hours a day life skills, two hours a day pushed into small reading groups with great fourth-grade students and educators. I loved this, but still knew and no job-specific experience or certification-specific with reading intervention. Two thousand nine, two thousand ten was a big year. Called back from layoff on the first day of the school year to teach fifth grade. The first day of school had started, and the kids were there with no teacher. I was in Plymouth at the time, but was at Lori within the hour, with a four and a five-year-old in tow. By the end of the week, I was now setting up a first-grade classroom at Lori. Leaving the fifth-grade class already, excited for my long-awaited dream to come true of teaching first graders, my uncertainties were alive, and wow, another change. My mid-year, by mid-year that year, another staffing change due to budget cuts. I lost my wonderful first graders that year. Able to use my voice and push fears aside, I saved my job. I spoke up and admitted to working on my master's in special education, autism-specific. The district was able to offer me my sixth-through-eighth-grade resource co-teaching position at Lori, ready to continue sharing my purpose to teach and guide children with love, crying inside of fear of one more change. I opened that resource room door with pride, looked at the emptiness around, no curriculum in sight, and certainly no step-by-step instructions of how to write an IEP. But what I did not know, I learned. I loved teaching special education and co-teaching. The remainder of that year, as well as the two thousand ten-eleven school year, I learned and grew. Eleven-twelve school year is another change. My position at Lori was filled due to an error at HR, processing my two-week leave as a full-year leave. HR offered to correct the error, but I could not imagine making another teacher pack up and leave two weeks in. I know it's extremely difficult making those changes. I was offered a position teaching fourth grade at Henry Ford. Wanting the stability of staying at Lori, not wanting to disrupt the teacher and students that have already started to build routines, I gratefully accepted the change for myself. Henry Ford gave me the first stability as an educator, my first team of teachers I was able to continue building relationships with, and really learn a depth of knowledge within one grade level. I returned to my first classroom after five years teaching fourth grade at Bryant Life Skills Classroom from the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year until December tenth, 2021. I couldn't have asked for a better last five years of my career. I have made many lifelong friends, had colleagues that have inspired me and guided me in each and every one of my hard changes. My last day teaching was nothing anyone ever wishes to have in a school, in any community, in any situation, a threat to our school. Chaos that would continue rising from the first bell until the last bell of the day. Chaos that cannot be recreated but will forever be felt. From the sight and the innocent children's eyes, the emotional parents' fears and screams, the calm administration trying to keep the peace throughout the office line, the continuously opening front doors, the sound of whispers everywhere. It was the hardest teaching day in my career. I left for lunch to take a breather outside of the school, only to return to my fifth hour that consisted of nine of twenty-seven students left. One student says, "Mrs. Haviland, why does it look like you have been crying?" Because I have. Another student says, "Are you scared?" I respond by letting my fears and tears go and speak with confidence. I am scared I cannot teach you the lesson you deserve today. I am scared I cannot take your fears away. I am scared I don't know how to make kids understand this is not a joke. The next voice rang out, "Mrs. Haviland, you love us too much." What I walked away with that day was the last lesson I ever taught. I need to tell all educators, use your voice. We cannot expect change if they do not have the knowledge. What I was taught by my students, a gift of a lifetime, all from the courage of children trusting me with their voice, telling me my purpose as an educator had been served. You can never love children too much. Dearborn Public Schools, I thank you for the very deserving career, cut short fifteen-point-seven-four years of service. Thank you for your opportunity to speak and to the students who have touched my life and my friends I've made. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Nassar would like to speak to the board about her son.
I hope you don't cut me off if I pass my time. Hi, my name is Zainab Nassar, and I'm a mother of Hussein Alawi. Hussein is thirteen years old. He's non-verbal, he's autistic, and he's cognitively impaired. Yes, Hussein is non-verbal, but I'm his voice. On April twenty-seven, I received a phone call that I pray no mother receives. Initially, I did not process or understand what was being said to me on the phone, but I understood that I need to leave my work immediately and get to How School to see my son Hussein. My son rides the bus to school, and he is the last kid to be picked up. And I never thought about how important that factor is, that he is the last one to be picked up. My son has been choked by his harness on the right to school. By the time they got to school, his lips were blue, his eyes were red, and he had red spots on his face that were a result of lack of oxygen. I know I only have five minutes. I'm not going to go into more detail about that day, but I have no problem to stay after the meeting to discuss the incident in details. A lot went wrong that day when I got to his school and met Hussein's teacher and the school principal and the parapro who was in tears. I could sense panic all around me. Since that day, I have not received answers to what happened to my son. I have heard hibbits and pieces, and none of it adds up to the evidence. It's almost two, it's almost been two weeks, and the superintendent has not even called me or met with me. I would have accepted, expected some compassion. I would have expected some honesty given. My son almost died, and each and every one of you is responsible for this. We have a big problem in our district, and it's time to address it. Our most vulnerable and non-verbal children are not a priority. Children with special needs are being bussed by a third company who has different staff almost daily, staff that are not trained nor familiar with our children and their needs. And cameras on some buses are not working, which happen to be since buses, one of them, at the time of the incident. This is a violation of civil rights laws. Our children deserve access to safe buses, just as every child does. This is, this is not the first incident that happened on the bus. Behind me and on Facebook now, there are group of parents who are not sending their kids on the bus out of fear due to their negative experience. I mean, what are you waiting for? How is this fair and how is it right? Our children may not receive a blue ribbon or make the honor roll or get accepted into Harvard, and the impression you all giving us, especially you, Mr. Superintendent, is that because there will never be any of the above, they will never be important enough to be cared about. I'm a mother, and I want answers, and I deserve answers. It's been almost two weeks, and the bruises around my son's neck haven't healed completely, and they are constant reminder that my son was struggling to breathe. It breaks my heart and kills me every time I think what Hussein went through, the fear, the pain, the struggle. It's your job and everyone's job to ensure the safety for our students, for our kids, and you all failed at this job. My son was not safe. Our kids need and require special attention and care that other kids don't. I'm my son's voice, and will speak up for him, and will follow this through, because he deserves that much as do other children. But if we keep going the way we are now, it's only a matter of time before we do end up with another tragic or at a funeral. Haidi ala kya, Hassan?
Ms. Fain Nemmer would like to speak to the board about student safety and special
Good evening, Board Trustees, Dr. Milako. I had a few issues that I wanted to cover tonight, but after hearing Zainab, I'm more compelled to share with you Cornell University's Law School definition of gross negligence. Gross negligence is a lack of care that demonstrates reckless disregard for the safety or lives of others, which is so great it appears to be a conscious violation of other people's rights to safety. This is a common theme that we're hearing at this podium, Dr. Milako, student safety. Student safety, which is paramount, paramount. You brought a police officer tonight to speak about the Forts Inn lockdown. More theatrics, more theatrics. Where is the study session to determine what happened, what went wrong, what are the lessons learned? The police officer, while they were doing their job, that only added to my anxiety regarding the situation. It added to my concern with respect to the situation. The police officer stated that when he got to the actual place of the incident, he had to do his due diligence as a police officer. He had to make sure that there are other accomplices in the vicinity that could actually go into the interior of the building, which would make it a hard lockdown, that there aren't passengers in the vehicle. That's due diligence on his part as a police officer. He's doing his due diligence. So the fact that it was labeled a soft lockdown now makes it even more questionable after that testimony. So what Trustee Moses stated earlier, that this should be a study session on its own, a standalone study session? Yes, that should be a study session, and this isn't only with respect to Forts Inn. And I did not hear one trustee tonight acknowledge the failure of the CAREHOC system in seventeen classrooms in Forts Inn High School. Twenty percent of the student population faculty were not aware that anything was happening. If my son was in his physics class, he would be sheltering in place because they were notified. If he was in his history class, he would be oblivious to anything that's happening outside the perimeter of his school. So you choose which classroom my son is in for him to be notified, the faculty. They feel like this is a cover-up. Have you reached out to the faculty, to the teachers who were not notified? I asked the trustees, this is an oversight body over the administration. Your role is to keep the checks and balances in place. I don't see checks and balances. And I came up here because, in addition to the Forts Inn High School, at So Ford, I've had teachers come up to me and say that it's malfunctioning there. Another school where this is an issue with the CAREHOC system, this is supposed to be the insulating factor, right, to notify the faculty, the staff, the students that something is happening, to also notify the parents that something is happening, a concern, you know, there's a communication that needs to happen to the, to the parents, to notify them that your children are safe, that there's nothing to worry about, the situation is being handled by Dearborn Police. At So Ford, it's malfunctioning there as well with the test drills that they've been running. Another school in Nowlin, they had a drill of the system. Instead of notifying the students to shelter in place, the drill was for a fire drill, to evacuate the building. This is very concerning, Dr. Milako. When I hear information like this, it is very concerning as a parent, and for you as an administrative, this should be at the top of your priorities to make sure that you have an insulating and compensating factor in place. It should work as intended. On April twenty-fifth, I brought to you the concern about National Trails. National Trails is the third-party vendor that buses our special needs children. After hearing Zainab, this came after the fact of communicating to the administration and to the board trustees that we're experiencing a lot of issues, transportation issues with National Trails. I don't have a special needs student. However, my son attended Howe Montessori growing up, and the unique experience that he was able to gain at Howe Montessori was next to, I guess, next to no other experience that he could have had anywhere else in the school system, because half of the school bodies, general education, the other half is special education. What's very unique about Howe is that they provide general education students with exposure to special needs students in a controlled environment. So they allow them to do a lot of activities together, you know, to do coaching events and also just regular activities. And my son still remembers those interactions. He still, you know, remembers all of the interactions that he's had with the special needs students. My point to you today is the transportation on those buses is lacking the proper training for the staff that are onboard the buses. There are a lot of punctuality issues. There are students that are being picked up an hour and a half late, dropped off two hours late. It is very concerning. Now, in addition to that, there are mechanical issues with buses. The mechanical issues are manifesting in more behavioral issues with the autistic children and the special needs children. So the teachers are also noticing that in, in the students. In addition to all of the mechanical issues, you have the staff that don't have the proper training. There's also quotas that need to be met in terms of busing a certain number of students on, on those buses, and if they don't pick up a student, then they have to go up, I guess, pick up additional students that are not on the roster or not scheduled for, for that day for pickup by that bus. So that translates into a lot of the delays that are happening. So again, this is a concern that is very specific to our special needs students. And I couldn't, in my entire, in my entire professional experience, I couldn't fathom, you know, to hear a parent come up and say that she almost lost her child on one of those buses. I feel like that's, that's kind of the juncture that we're at, where we, we need to experience a calamity or experience loss of life in order for it to register that this is an actual critical matter that needs to be addressed. You know, the Forts Inn lockdown, the special needs children, transportation needs and lack of training of the personnel onboard those buses, do we need to experience loss of life in order to determine that, yes, this needs to be addressed, this needs our attention? So again, you know, this is on the administration, Dr. Milako. This is on you as the leader of this district to ensure the safety of the students, whether it's the special needs students or the general education students. This is a theme that's affecting the entire district, and we're calling on you as the leader of this district to make sure that that priority is where it needs to be.
Thank you.
Next, Angela Zee.
Zee.
B, I'm sorry, I apologize. Would like to come to the board to speak about Honeyford Early College.
Hello, my name is Angela, and I'm so sorry to care about Zain. First of all, Dr. Milako, my daughter emailed you with how she was feeling with the principal not being involved, not being involved in the school, and the only thing that you had to say to her was, "Thank you for your thoughts." I emailed you on Friday, and I was supposed to get a phone call from you over the weekend or today, and I did not receive a phone call from you. I did not say what I wanted to talk to you about, but this is very concerning to me that my stu, my two children right now, one of them is super senior and one of them is a junior, and that school does not have a principal. When my daughter is graduating on May fourteenth, who is gonna be calling out her name? Her teacher? The other two of my kids that graduated from their, from that school, Mr. Fadlala was the one to call their name.
Please don't use names.
Okay, sorry, came out. The first child, that principal is the one who pushed my daughter to be now a third-year med student. He pushed my son now to be second-year pharmacy school. He pushed my third daughter, right now the super senior, to be in nursing school. And he has, and they're not being a principal to control that school, and my kids feel comfortable enough to go to and talk to. Who do they talk to? Who do they get questions from? Who do they get answers from? Because they don't feel comfortable talking to anybody else. And another thing, why weren't the parents notified? If supposedly this is under investigation for racism, supposedly, that's what we've been hearing, how come it hasn't been addressed to us? How come it hasn't been taken care of? And you, I'm sorry to know your name. You said, you said students were stereotyping and like, stereotyping and not only each other and bullying, whatever. The students are stereotyping and bullying the principal now, since when that, that mister whatever has been in that school, since I remember, since two thousand and twelve. We've never had this issue before. Why all of the sudden this has come up? I don't think that any parent or, or any student should have a school without a principal. How come you have not addressed this? Where are your voices? Why aren't you guys discussing it? Why aren't you guys asking who are we gonna replace in his spot? Putting... Putting him online does not do anything for us. Even if he's working online. What did he do so wrong for you guys to do? Obviously, obviously, communication is a very, you guys don't have it downright at all. You guys are very bad with timing. You guys are very bad with talking to parents. You guys are very bad with students. I don't know, there's a bunch of other things I'm sure a lot of people here would like to say, you know? This all needs to be addressed. And honestly, on March fourth, on May fourteenth, I really want to see Mr., the principal of Henry Ford Early College saying my daughter's name, the third child that I had there graduating from that school. And there is no other person who should be calling her name but him because he's the one who pushed her to where she is today. He was there in her good and her bad and with Miriam Mahdi, Miriam, I mean, Miriam, Miriam, Zainab, and Nowlela, my junior. He was not there for the PSATs. He was not for the SATs or the, yeah, SATs and all those other places. Where, where, where was he? Who did you guys put in charge? Why?
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Well, I want answers. And are you going to follow up? Are you going to follow up with answers?
Things go on behind the scenes that you're not aware of. Just because you hear things doesn't mean that things aren't happening. That, and we cannot discuss any kind of investigation or personnel matters to anyone.
Okay, Ms. McDonald, are you going to respond and let me know? Are you going to follow up with the comment? And let me know through via email or whatever way you're going to let me know what is going to happen? And is he going to be there to announce my daughter's name and why the school is still without a principal? Are you going to respond to me and let me know what is going on in that school?
I will respond to you. If you send me an email, I will respond to you.
Mr. Maleko hasn't, haven't forwarded it to you.
And, no, there's certain things that I can say and certain things that I cannot say.
Okay.
So if you email me directly, I will respond to you. But you have to understand that there's things that we cannot, we cannot bring out publicly. Legally, we cannot.
Okay, how do I get your email?
It's on the district website.
Okay, I will email you and I will do a copy paste, and I'll add Dr. Maleko on there and find out what will happen on May fourteenth, Saturday, coming up. And hopefully, Mr. Fadlala will be there. Sorry, didn't mean to say his name.
Thank you. Yes.
So, I can comment that Mr. Salome is the current acting principal over there. And I did put out a communication that was sent out. Unfortunately, I, when there's personnel matters or, you know, situations occurring, there's not a lot of detail that I can share. I did get a tremendous amount of communications from students, from staff. I went over to the, with Mr. Martin and Ms. Alkaidri went and met with staff to talk about, you know, what we were doing and our plan of what we could say. And unfortunately, we are tied with legalities when you're dealing with personnel matters. But we do have a principle in place, and Mr. Martin, I know, has been in contact with Mr. Salome to ensure that he would be the one, you know, running the graduation, and we will be there as well.
Well, let me step back up here. I don't know who Mr., the acting principal. I don't know who that is. All I know is that it was Mr. F.
Yeah.
That has been through there from 2012 until now.
He's been at the, he has been at the building since the start of this school year, so, but.
It's the most important thing for me right now.
Next, Ms. Amira Sadi would like to come to speak to the board about STEM school and specialized programming entrance criteria to be expanded this year.
Hello. I didn't come here intending to speak. I just came here to support teachers and parents as they voice their concerns. And hearing the parent speaking right now, I had heard about the issue on social media. And again, it is a tool, it could be good, it could be bad. But I just remember breaking down when I first heard about it as a mother. You know, I expect things to happen at school. As a teacher, I expect things to happen at school. The one thing I don't expect is for my child to come to a near-death experience. So I just want to reiterate how serious this is. And to the other point about just gross negligence and even minor negligence. And to me, the way we use test scores in this district is a form of negligence. 2018 was like one of the first emails that was sent to the school board administrators made aware of how test scores were preventing equitable access to all students into specialized programs. And nothing was really done about it. And I didn't hear today that STEM school criteria or any criteria was expanded for this year. And correct me if I'm wrong, is it for this year or are we only starting that next year? Even though people were made aware back in 2018. So is it for this year? Is it taking effect?
Yes.
Okay, so are parents going to be made aware of this? Because there's been no communication. I've had to individually let parents know that they expanded the criteria so that we're not unfairly illegally preventing students from having equitable access to all the quality education that we have here. Is there going to be some public communication? Okay, okay. And I just want us, like, moving forward, there's a lot of discontent in the district from every category and every stakeholder. And, I mean, there's a culture of rubber stamping in this district that just needs to be called out. And again, I did not intend to speak. I usually have a prepared speech. But I'm so moved by what's happening in this room, and something needs to change. I know several parents, we had a whole, we filled this room in October telling you about issues that we've had. And I want, a lot of suggestions that were made have not been implemented, have not been heard. So I think the frustration is just boiling over at this point. And I have a child who just entered the district, and I spoke about the teacher and what a remarkable job she did. But every student, every child in this district should have that opportunity. STEM shouldn't be isolated to a building. It should be expanded across the district. I know that's the intent, but why did it not move in 2018 when everybody got an email about the fact that we are disproportionately preventing certain segments of our population from entering into these programs and having access? Why does it take, you know, people were like, "Yeah, it's great that teachers showed up in October, but why didn't you come in, you know, November?" Do you know what capacity, what it took to have teachers show up at the end of a long school day? It's like it can't happen every month, and it shouldn't have to happen every month. So, I mean, I don't know, I'm rambling at this point. This is why I like to have prepared speeches. But I hope you can sense my frustration and anger and do something with what you're hearing. And, you know, Fay is absolutely right. Does it take a child's death? And does it have to be, how about the spiritual death that teachers and students go through to get heard? So I'm just frustrated. I protect my children as much as I can, but I treat every child that I see as if they're my own. And I hope my students can speak to that and parents can attest to that. But I want you all to make me feel like you do feel like every child in this district is yours and could be yours. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Is that the last one?
No, no.
When you get to that, I just want to make a statement.
Next, Crystal Paulson would like to come and speak to the board. I don't know about what, though.
It wasn't planned on speaking today, but, oh, sorry. The mother who spoke first, I have something in common with her. Our sons. I can tell you what goes through her head every single day. And worrying, stressed, anxiety. She had a lot of fear that I fear every single day of not being there for my kid. I've been upset with you guys. You guys know I have. But this, I'm disgusted. I'm disgusted. No child should ever have to go through that, especially a child like that.
Mrs. Stephanie Butler-Bayden would like to come to speak to the board about special ed.
So I came with a couple of different things I wanted to talk about, but obviously, the room is with that mother tonight. And I saw that on social media, as I'm a moderator for one Dearborn. And when I saw that, my stomach dropped. My stomach dropped. And I want you to know, I started looking into the laws. And there is no law that a school district has to bus regular students unless the Board of Education votes on that. However, there is a law regarding special education students and the right to be bussed through their IEPs. So why we're third sourcing that out and our regular education students are riding the buses? I don't understand. That those kind of students take special needs considerations. They have to have staff watching. You know, we were all quick to try to blame the driver, and part of it's her, but also she has to watch the road, so there's staff that have to be on that bus. So I came up here with a proposal, and I hate to put you guys on the spot, but my proposal is, and let me know what you think of this, we have an electric bus coming. Why don't we donate that electric bus to the special education students? Many, many different reasons why. But one, a lot of those kids have sensory issues, and the noise from the motors of the buses go and do bother them. There is no better place for that bus to go than to pick up Hussein to back and forth to school every day on a safe bus with staff that are doing their job. And we can hold Dearborn schools responsible, not some third party that we're outsourcing to. So that's my proposal to you with that new $600,000 bus we have. Okay, that's one. I'm shocked, and it's not my duty to apologize to you, but on behalf of the district, I'm sorry that you didn't even receive a phone call. That's shameful. I don't have an excuse to give you, okay? So on behalf of the people, I do apologize for that. So I'm going to move on to another issue, and I got lots of backup on this one. You have a teacher in Salford. I'm not going to say what class it is. I'm not going to give the teachers information away. However, you have a teacher in class telling students that they're not going to be shit in their life. You have him also telling students that they'll be lucky if he, the teacher, shows up to school the next day because he's suicidal and he wants to kill himself. A teacher telling our students that he wants to kill himself. Unacceptable. We have got to get it together here. We've got to get it together. Two of my students are gone, one's graduating. My other one is leaving the district. She's going to school in Venice, Florida. She hates it here so much. Hates it. Because of things like this. You've got teachers walking around saying these kinds of things to our students. Unacceptable. We have to do better.
There was one last blue card, edited a last minute. We do not accept blue cards this late at the date, but this is supposed to be a study session about the bond. This is, he wrote down that it was about the bond. I will allow you to come up. Please keep it to three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Aden, I was here, I'm here, came actually for the bond, yes. And I was surprised what our children was facing here at the Dearborn School, which I refresh my memory for my son, which being attacked from a teacher in Dearborn School. And the Board of Education do nothing, just tell me, "I'm sorry." And the teacher's still studying, teaching the school classes, which is crazy. And I'm sorry for everybody here. So, and I came for the bond, yes, I am here for the bond. And we was, two weeks ago, Fortson High School, with a meeting. We went to the meeting, and there's doors was closed. No such a sign outside for the meeting. People just go around the school. Didn't know where to go into the school to be in a meeting. However, we went just, me and my friend, and we found just, no bird, nor there is no citizen was in a meeting. Only like private meeting was there, which is not acceptable. So we dressed the problem, there's no sign, all doors was closed. And they promised they're going to issue it, and they apologized. Last week, same issue happened again. Looked like they don't care about what's about the citizen request at Salina School. No sign. And we went there after we asked, "Where is this? Where is the problem?" And we discussed a lot, you know, issue. My point is, okay, they ask us for, they ask people to go, and they put on the table, "You are requesting $200 million bond." For what? There is no such building schools, there is no such extended schools. There is no such an idea for this bond. What is it for? But they asked me, "Go vote yes." Okay? That's, there wasn't a table. Okay, you wasn't there, I was there.
We haven't even decided whether we're going to put a bond on the table. So nobody should be asking you to vote yes because that decision has not been made.
Yeah, that's the way they tried to put people, that's what to try to get people for meeting to explain this bond for.
We don't even have a bond proposal.
I know that. There is no bond, but this was the plan to do a bond. I'd explain, and they tried to explain, there's, you know, this, the foundation to get people to understand there's a, you know, a bond for the schools under the name of the education. There is no, because we discussed this, me and him, there is no such an idea, okay? You ask people to come for a meeting, for what? There's no bond, so why do you ask people to come over?
We wanted, the whole purpose of those meetings was to get input from the community on what you would like to see or not see in a bond. What you see is the needs of the school district, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's building new buildings. We've had these conversations for months and months and months, and we wanted more input from the community. Even though we did have community committees set up to get input, we're looking, we're trying to spread the net out farther to reach more people, to get more input, to get more ideas, to be more open about the process.
Yes.
This, the meetings were not to encourage someone to vote yes on something we haven't even designed yet.
Exactly. There's, the meeting to ask people, okay? This is a foundation for the bond, come in. That's the idea for, bring people to this, this, okay, we're going to do this, okay? We're going to sell fish in the water. There is no, there is no idea of what you guys are going to do. There is no, okay, will you guys ask for bond? I mean, to set up a bond. I know it's not on the table yet, but there is an idea to board it on the table. Okay, whenever, we have $80 million is still there for the education. It's not being used. So let's use this first, then go ask for a gain. Okay? Because this is, this is too much, too much tax. We are in Dearborn paying a lot of taxes. It's enough. Enough gaining, enough playing around. Okay, we tell you, me, and there's thousands of people, okay?
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.